Welcome, everyone. It's just a hair past 6:30 here, so as usual, we will get started. Just before I call to order, I will reiterate our mission and purpose. We've tried to incorporate that at the beginning of our meetings to give everybody kind of a baseline of why we're here and what we're doing. So if you remember, our vision is that we, we being the school district of Milton, believe in opportunities, achievement, and community for all. And our mission as the school district of Milton is to partner with the community, prepare our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all. So having said that, I will call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, the 10th of April, and would ask that you join me in a salute to our play and our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. Mr. Donovan, are you aware of any changes to our agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
And as such, if you could approve it, if you're willing, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Jennifer, to approve our agenda. Are there questions? All in favor of approval signify with aye. Aye and opposed? Thank you. Minutes are next, and they are included in board docs as usual.
I'll move to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on March 13, 2023. Yes, presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. On a motion from Jennifer, seconded by Rick, we've offered approval of the minutes. Are there questions on those? I see none. All in favor of approval of our previous meeting minutes? Signify with aye. Aye and opposed? That clearly passes. Vouchers are similarly included.
I'll make a motion to approve general checking account vouchers, totally $1,238,243.38 as presented.
Second. Thank you. That motion from Mike, seconded by Rick, is to approve our general checking account vouchers in the amount he just enumerated. Are there questions on the vouchers? Here again, I see none. So all in favor of approval of our vouchers signify with aye. Aye and opposed? Thank you. The vouchers are approved. And certainly, one of the things we look forward to all the time is our student council report. Ms. Mesa, welcome.
Hi, everyone. Okay, so I want to update you that Rob is the 29th, and it's one of the state's like high school, so many kids have been invited though. We also, we didn't have much new news for student councils since we're meeting this Thursday, but I wanted to tell you guys about a new club that we started, this whole student council, and a couple other students that came up with the idea. It's a diversity and inclusion real, like chats, puts them over the after hours, and then students in the school. And then I also just wanted to highlight what I heard about some of the students talk about the referendum, and the most reoccurring comment I've heard is that they worry about extracurriculars being cut and taking courses and teaching. Thank you.
What did you say your new club was called, Mesa?
Um, it's like diversity and inclusion chats.
Gotcha. Okay. Very good. Thank you for that. Okay, next on our agenda is public comment, and as I scanned it, I saw no one signed up. Would you double check, please, Rich? Okay. Nobody has signed up for public comment, so we will roll past that. Two on this agenda is our superintendent update for highlights, Red Hawk highlights, Rich.
A couple of things that I want to highlight today. With the nice weather this week, which should be busy for our spring sports, we are gearing up, looking forward to another great season, and Red Hawk's real softball teams have a strong start to the season, and good luck to all of our spring sports, and we will have some nice weather for their activities coming up. I want to alert families that they should keep an eye out in the coming weeks for a link to our district's annual family engagement survey. That survey will be shared through an upcoming edition of the Red Hawk Review and through the Family Access email, and we're always grateful for our family's feedback and want to thank them for sharing their thoughts with us through that survey. We have a new member of our school district Milton team at Northside, Hazel, a therapy dog at Northside, has joined the district, and she can be relied on for comfort for Northside students and staff, and is in the front office mainly, but also getting out into classrooms too, and I know her in the newspaper, people saw that. The middle school theater performance is coming up. It's The Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe. Students will perform that presentation this Friday at 6:30 and Saturday at 2:30, and all community members are welcome to attend. Tickets will be sold at the door. So The Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe, this weekend, Friday at 6:30, Saturday at 2:30, Middle School. And finally, just before spring break, at both the middle school and the high school, both student bodies celebrate and choose to include a week, and the unity teams, which are affiliated with Special Olympics, celebrate the district's commitment to kindness, acceptance, and inclusion for individuals of all abilities in athletics and activities. Special Olympics Wisconsin was at the high school to report our students for an upcoming feature that they were allowed, and our middle school team helped choose to include assembly where staff and students competed against each other in several different obstacles. We have a, I want to give a huge shout out to our unity team advisors at both the middle school and the high school, and all the students that were involved in planning and helping those activities.
Very good. Any questions for Rich? Thanks, Rich. Oh, moving down, three is we've had a busy recent past here with our joint meetings between Human Resources and Finance Committee, which, and Shelley has been coming too, so that includes basically our whole board. Those are chaired by Mike and Rick, and they engaged in a lengthy battle of thumb wrestling to see who's going to give a report tonight, and I'm assuming Rick wants one.
Thanks, Joe. Let's keep, the fifth, we had another joint finance, HR committee meeting, just sorry.
Carrie, do you need us to pause this shift here?
We're so good.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Sorry. Presiding on the agenda was other post-employment benefits and future options. The board has been reviewing the district's OPAD for a few years now. In January, the board engaged key benefits concepts, provided in-depth review and consideration of restructuring the current benefit. For the course of five meetings, the committees reviewed the current benefit and the related costs, established goals, and looked at various benefit plan options. The committees also sought feedback from the Employee Benefits Advisory Group, which was taken into consideration as the new proposed benefit plan was developed. Linda Mott from Key Benefits Concepts is here to present the committee's work and review the proposed benefit for teachers and support staff. So Linda, I'm going to turn it over to you, if you can hear me.
Maybe real briefly. I can hear you, just had to turn my speaker on. Thank you.
Hey, real briefly, before Linda gets started, I want to highlight for folks in the audience here and at home that there are four different attachments that are found in this agenda item in board docs. One is a copy of the meeting slideshow that we're going through. There's also a memo highlighting the information that will be shared, and then a proposed plan for both the teacher group and the support staff group. And in the memo, there are a couple of things I want to make sure that people are aware of too, also. Board policy directs the HR committee to review existing benefits packages on an annual basis. So every year, that group takes a look at employee benefits. This year, that group determined to work with Linda Mott with the key benefits concepts, and we'll be hearing more from her in just a moment. Over the past months, the boards, HR, and finance committees have been working with KBC to review benefits for teachers and support staff. To complete that process, the reviews for administrators and supervisors will be issued in the coming months, and the proposed new plan uses a tiered structure to address the needs of employees at various stages of their careers, provide financial sustainability for the school district. With that said, Linda, if you're ready to go through your presentation, we'll have your slides on the board here.
Okay, and I believe someone from the district was going to put those slides up?
There they are.
There they are. Okay. Well, I'm just going to take a very quick walkthrough, and basically, between what's already been said, some of these things are repeated on the slide, so don't want to belabor those points, but we did work with the school district in a series of meetings to look at restructuring the post-employment benefits. So let's go to the next slide. The approach was a series of meetings in which we reviewed the current benefits and costs. We looked at establishing some goals as to what the new benefit or the revised benefit would look like and why. We considered various benefit options and different benefit vehicles. We also sought specific feedback from the Employee Benefit Advisory Group with regard to some of the questions or the concerns that we were looking at in reference to those plan designs. So if we go to the next slide, the strategic plan is to control the costs for those benefits and to promote longevity. We want employees to come to the school district and to stay for a long period of time. We're also transitioning from health insurance coverage on the district's plan to a defined contribution benefit, and then eventually to a cash-based benefit. And you'll see that with the tiers that we're going to walk through that Rich had already mentioned. So if we go to the plan designs, let's go to the next slide right away. We'll go into the teachers. Now, the teachers have three tiers, and I've broken down, or we've broken down, Tier 1 into Tier 1A and 1B. So for Tier 1A, these are the people that are closest to retirement. They are those that are eligible to retire and retiring by 6:30, 2027. Now, this would be people that are at least age 50, or teachers that are at least age 50 with 10 years of service as of 6:30, 2023. Now, note that this benefit is effective July 1, 2023, for employees retiring at the end of the 2324 school year through 6:30, 2027. So anyone who is retiring as of 6:30, 2023 is not affected by this benefit. They would get the current benefit. It's just those that would be retiring in the 2324 school year through the 6:30, 2027 period of time. Eligibility is WRS eligible and considered an annuitant under WRS standards. Now, that is a change. Instead of just being eligible for your WRS benefit, it's now going to be required that you are actually receiving or have annuitized to receive your WRS benefit, and you must have at least 15 years of service with the district prior to this retirement. The benefit is very similar to the current benefit. It will be, the district will allow continued coverage on the district's health insurance plan. It was currently at 87.4%. The district had already made a decision to move to 85%, so that's why it's listed as currently 85%. And the district's contribution will remain frozen at that 85% of whatever the premium is at the time of retirement for a period of four years, but now we've added a maximum, up to a maximum of 32,300 single and 76,000 for family over that four-year period of time. So that is something that, depending upon the increase in premiums over the years and the plan design chosen in retirement, down the road, that maximum may come into play. If a retired, a retiree becomes Medicare eligible prior to the exhaustion of their benefit, a Medicare carbo plan will be instituted in lieu of regular coverage, and that is the current plan. And again, Tier 1 employees may remain on the district's health plan for the 48 months following retirement if retiring by 6:30, 2027. So in this period, the healthcare benefit, the adjustments here are adding the maximums and requiring the WRS annuitant for retirement. Now, in lieu of staying on the district's health insurance plan, the person can receive the cash in lieu of benefit, so they may choose to take the waiver of the health insurance and receive $2,375 in cash per year for a period of four years. Now, during that period of time, they have a one-time opportunity to switch from continued medical to cash in lieu or vice versa. Okay? And that is currently the situation. So that is the first tier for anyone who's eligible to retire and does retire by 6:30, 2027. Okay? If we move on to the next slide, this is basically the Tier 1A people, same eligibility, but they did not retire by 6:30, 2027. And so in order to receive a benefit, we are dropping down a little bit, they could have retired under Tier 1A and did not. So in this situation, the eligibility remains the same, WRS eligible and annuitant with at least 15 years of service. The benefit itself is the 85% of premium frozen at retirement and not to exceed 8,075 single per year and 19,000 per family per year. Instead, it goes into an HRA. By the way, the 8,075 and the 19,000 per year for the four years is equivalent to the Tier 1A maximums of 32,300 single and 76,000 for family over a four-year period. We broke it down that way because the amounts would go annually into an HRA account. Now, those that are eligible for this HRA benefit are those that are on the district's health insurance plan at retirement and had been on the plan for at least three years prior to retirement. Okay? Since this money is going into an HRA and not continuation on the district's health insurance plan, although it could be used for continuation on the district's health insurance plan, it, the district's benefit for staying on the health plan is limited to COBRA, which in most circumstances would be 18 months. So this person in 1A can retire and receive the monies into an HRA, may elect COBRA, but their COBRA election period will end, or most likely will end, before the HRA dollars end, and so they would then be looking at another option, and there are different options in the marketplace for purchasing health insurance. There's also options of going on a spouse's health insurance plan with after-tax dollars or taking another employer's plan and using after-tax dollars and then being reimbursed through the HRA. Now, for those people in 1B that have not been on the district's health insurance plan for three years, three consecutive years prior to retirement, they would not be eligible for the HRA. Instead, they would get the contribution to the 403B, and in this case, it would be $2,500 a year for four years, so that would be an annual contribution of $2,500. Now, moving on to the next slide. This is Tier 2, so those that are not eligible for Tier 1 and eligible to retire by 6:30, 2037, so another 10 years later, and in essence, what we're looking at is it's anyone who is a teacher at this point in time and is at least age 40 with one year of service as of 6:30, 2023. So trying to segregate how, who's going to be in which brackets here. Again, eligibility is the same, WRS eligible and a WRS annuitant with at least 15 years of service. Now, the HRA contribution, if they're on the district's health plan at retirement for consecutive three-year period, the district provides the contribution of $6,970 for single coverage and $16,379 for family coverage for four years following the date of retirement. And retirees may only stay on the district's health plan for the COBRA election period, again, very similar to the previous one. Those that have not been on the district's health plan for three consecutive years would receive the 403B contribution, which is the $2,500 a year for four years. Now, you'll note at the bottom of this page, we're going to go to Tier 3, which are those folks that are not eligible for Tiers 1 and 2 and any new hires after 7/1, 2023, but there will be a one-time opportunity for the employees in Tier 2 to elect to move to Tier 3, and we will have to figure a 90-day window to make that decision because they would have to have made that decision prior to the next plan year, so we know where to account for the benefit. So if we move on to the third, the next slide, which is the third tier. Again, as I mentioned, these are those employees that are not eligible for Tier 1 or 2 and are employed as of June 30, 2023, and new hires on or after July 1, 2023. Now, what we've done is we've kind of made that transition away from healthcare benefits altogether and looking at a cash-based benefit. In this case, the district is going to make two 403B contributions. If you look at that first box, the years of service, so employees with 1 to 10 years of service, the employer will make an annual contribution of $300, and the employee, if they make a contribution to their 403B of $400, the employer would match 50% and put $200 in. Now, an employee could make a contribution of less than $400, and the employer will match 50% of their employee contribution into their 403B up to that maximum of 200. Employees with 11 to 20 years of service, the employer will make a $600 contribution on an annual basis. In addition, if the employee makes a contribution up to $800 into their 403B, the employer will match 50% of whatever their contribution is up to a maximum of $400. Those employees with 21 or more years of service, the employer will make an annual contribution of $1,000, and if the employee makes a contribution up to $1,600 into their 403B, the employer will match 50% on the dollar up to a max of $800. Now, the question here is, well, where do you fall on this? You can have someone in Tier 3 who already has, for example, eight years of service. They would come in, in that 1 to 10 bracket, and start with their eighth year of service, or if they have 12, they would start with their 12th. So we're going to be looking at where are you walking into this and where do you fall based upon your years of service from date of hire, while also looking at the contributions the employer is making and apply a vesting schedule. And that vesting schedule has to do, again, with your years of service from date of hire. So after five years of service, returning in the sixth year of service, the contributions made by the employer are 10% vested. So someone who leaves after the sixth year of service, after completing five full years and has returned to the school in the sixth year, would receive 10% of those dollars that the employer put in and 10% of the match. After 10 years of service, returning in the 11th year, now 25% of those benefits are vested, and should they leave the district, 25% of the employer contribution and the employer match would remain with the employee if they leave the district, and the 75% would be forfeited. After 15 years of service, 50% of the benefit is vested, and they would take 50% with them. The other 50% would be forfeited. Or if they're, I'm sorry, that should say 20 years. I'm not sure why we have 15 there. It should have said 20 years. Or 100% vested at WRS eligibility with at least 15 years of service in the district. Okay? So now we would have 100% vesting when the person retires under WRS with at least 15 years of service, again, being under WRS. Now, someone who came into the district going into the 2324 school year and had prior years of service with the district, say they had eight years of service, we want to create a catch-up contribution to provide a benefit to that employee for their last eight years of service under this Tier 3. So we would look back under that last box, catch-up calculation, and for the first through the eighth year of service, the district would set aside $500 per year, five times eight, $4,000, to put into that 403B so that that benefit would be caught up, and then each year, additional monies would be put into the 403B based on the schedule above. Someone who had 11 to 20, or even if you crossed over, let's say that you had 12 years of service, well, for the first 10 years, we'd be putting 500 per year, and then for the 11th year, we'd be adding 1,000, and so it would be that lump sum amount that would be counted into that 403B and applied to that vesting schedule for past years of service. Okay? The benefits earned from date of hire through June 30, 2023, based upon that schedule, will be determined and provided into the 403B benefit upon retirement, WRS eligibility with at least 15 years of service. Okay? So this monies will remain in the account and be invested, and the employee can see and watch this money grow, but knowing that that benefit would not be earned until they actually retired from the district, but they have access to those dollars, access to seeing those dollars and watching them grow in addition to the dollars that they're funding since July 1 of 2023. The next set of slides are a similar benefit for the support staff, broken down in much the same manner. We have 1A eligible to retire and retiring again by 6:30, 2027. Again, the same group of people, anyone who is at least age 50 with 10 years of service. Again, on the left, in order to be eligible for this benefit, you must be WRS eligible and actually annuitize your benefit and have at least 15 years of service in the district. Now, the staff, the support staff current benefit is 94% of premium, and so that benefit would apply instead of the 85%. So the district contribution for these folks will be at 94% of the premium at the time of retirement, frozen at that amount for four years, but up to the same maximums we were looking at for the teachers. So over that four-year period, the maximum benefit the district would provide would be 32,300 single and 76,000 family. If a retiree becomes Medicare eligible prior to the exhaustion of that benefit, just like currently, the Medicare carbo plan would be instituted, the benefit would be based upon that, and this is continued medical coverage. So these people would be allowed to remain on the district's health insurance plan for up to 48 months following retirement if they retire by June 30, 2027. They also have the cash in lieu benefit, so if they decide they aren't on the health insurance plan or don't want that benefit, they would receive then the four annual payments of $2,375 in cash, and again, they have a one-time opportunity during that four-year period to change from medical to cash in lieu or vice versa. So this is very similar to the current benefit. Again, just adding that you have to be a WRS annuitant and the caps that we're putting on the dollar amount that would be paid out by the district. We go to the next slide. So 1B, very much like 1B for the teachers, are those who are eligible to retire under Tier 1A but did not retire by 6:30, 2027, and again, they would be eligible for this benefit if they are WRS eligible and annuitizing and have 15 years of service. But now, if the benefit goes into an HRA instead of being allowed to stay on the health insurance plan, the employees would get the the employees would get the HRA benefit if they have been under the district's health insurance plan for three consecutive years prior to retirement. That the benefit, the HRA contribution, will be based upon 85% of the premium, the district's health insurance premium, frozen at retirement, and not to exceed the $8,075 for single or $19,000 for family per year for four years following the date of retirement. The money goes into an HRA account that can be used for health insurance premium on the district's plan for the period of COBRA or on an outside health insurance plan. So there's many options out there. If staying on the district's plan, COBRA most likely will end after 18 months. There are some situations where it may extend a little longer, but most likely, the HRA contributions would continue beyond the period of COBRA. So that would be a decision of the employee at retirement. And if they do stay on COBRA, then at some point, they would have to move to a different plan. If the employee is not on the district's health insurance plan for three years prior to retirement, they would then be eligible for the 403B contribution. And that is the $2,500 per year for four years into a 403B account. We move on to the next slide. Now we're looking at tier two, and again, these tiers are the exact same eligibility and the exact same tier definitions. So we're trying to keep this as simple as possible. So tier two are those that are not eligible for tier one and eligible to retire by 6:30, 2037. So 10 years later. And that would be anyone who's at least age 40 with at least one year of service. Eligibility for this benefit at retirement requires that the employee would be WRS eligible and annuitizing and would have at least 15 years of service in the district. Very similarly, it would be the HRA contribution. If they're on the district's health insurance plan for three consecutive years prior to retirement, and the district contribution now would be a contribution of $6,970 for single coverage and $16,379 for family coverage for four years following the date of retirement. Retirees now have this HRA contribution and the annual allotment being added to that HRA account to be used for reimbursement of health premiums. But they may stay on the district's health insurance plan for the period of COBRA. If they have not had three consecutive years of health insurance coverage prior to retirement, they would not be eligible for the HRA contribution. Instead, they would receive the 403B contribution. And that would be the $2,500 a year for four years into the HRA. I'm sorry, 403B, excuse me. Now, for this tier two, similarly to the teacher benefit, tier two employees would be given a one-time opportunity to elect to move to tier three. And we're looking at a 90-day window, the period of time is yet to be determined, to make the decision that either they want to stay in tier two or they want to move to tier three. So if we move on to the next slide, the tier three benefit, again, looks very similar to what we had for the teachers. Those now eligible for tier one and two, employed as of June 30th, 2023, and new hires hired on or after July 1, 2023. It begins with active employee contributions or employer contributions, beginning with the 23-24 school year. And based upon that first box on the top, the employer will make a contribution based upon the employee's years of service each year. So anyone with one to 10 years of service, the employer will make a contribution of $300 annually into the 403B. And if the employee makes a contribution of up to $400, the employer will match 50% up to $200 maximum that year. An employee with 11 to 20 years of service, the employer will make an annual contribution of $600. And if the employee makes a contribution to their 403B in the amount up to $800, the employer will match 50 cents on the dollar up to $400 contribution. Those with 21 or more years of service, the employer will make a contribution of $1,000. And if the employee makes the contribution to their 403B, the employer will make a 50% match up to a maximum of $800. The vesting schedule noted underneath is very similar. Based upon an employee leaving service, the goal here is to really encourage people to stay, to show the value of their employment by increasing the dollar amount with their increased years of service and increasing the match as well, and increasing then the vested portion of that benefit at the time that the person is employed or however long that person is employed with the district. Okay, just like before with the catch-up contributions, listed on the bottom for years of service from date of hire through 6:30, 2023, the dollar amount for the catch-up will be determined based upon years of service. So for years of service, one to 10, the district will set aside 500 a year for the catch-up contribution. Then for 11 to 20, add $1,000 for each year between 11 to 20, up to how many years of service that person has as of 6:30, 2023. And then, of course, at 21, yeah, up to $1,800. So this is trying to transition over to a longevity benefit. And really looking at the longer you stay, the more that the district will set aside, the greater the vesting and the opportunity for investment income on those dollars that are in the 403B. Any questions or anything you want to go over again?
Linda, just to clarify on tier 1A, 1B, and 2, where it says a minimum of 15 years of service, that's not just 15 years within the WRS system, right? It's 15 years within the Milton School District, correct?
Yes, when you're doing an outline like this, you can't put every item in here, but it's 15 years of service with the District of Milton. Thank you.
And just another question to Linda. For employees that have chosen to contribute to the 403B, let's say they leave the district before they're vested or they're partially vested, the money they contribute is, and any interest that has been gained on that account would be theirs, correct?
Absolutely. Any monies that the employee puts into their account and any interest earned on the monies that they've put into their account are theirs from the moment they put it in. All we're looking at is how much the employer will put in based upon that contribution. The other aspect of it is depending upon, and we've talked about approaches of managing this 403B account, the goal would be that the employee would see the dollars that the district is making in contributions each year, be able to invest those dollars, watch them grow, and when they leave, they would receive whatever percentage vested they are of the dollars the district put in and whatever percentage of the investment income on those district dollars as well. So it should help that it's more than just district contribution. And that's why the goal is to try to get that catch-up contribution in right away so that they can see their past monies there and invest it and watch it grow.
And then just one more point of clarification, Linda, you made the comment, I think it was on the vesting schedule, that the 15 years should be 20 years, is that correct?
I'm sorry, the 15 years would be, well, the way that we, it's 15 years is 50% vested. My apologies, I think what we're missing is a line that says you're 100% vested after 20 years. You're 50% vested up to 20 years. So at 15 to 19.99, you're 50% vested. But according to 403B guidelines, after 20 years of service, you must be 100% vested. However, you can see on the right side, should an employee retire after 15 years of service in the district and be WRS eligible, then we're also granting 100%.
Thanks for that clarification.
I think that's an important clarification to make. It wasn't on the slide, but it is on each of the individual pages that are, that are in board docs, the one for teachers and the one for support staff. If I can take a minute, we've gotten some questions. I want to highlight a few kind of frequent asked questions that we've heard from folks. Because I think it does help provide some some clarity to the different parts of this. One common question that people have asked over the last few days is what tier am I at? So we've kind of walked through, and the tiers are based on a person's age and years of experience. As of June 30th of 2022, so going back to the end of the previous year, the reason that it goes back to that is because this plan builds in four years of time for people to retire to maintain that 1A status. And in order to do that in four years, that would give them until 2027 to retire. But people that are WRA eligible to retire in 2027, turn 50, honor before June 30th of 22. So what tier plan is a common question? Another was the HRA contribution that's laid out in both tier 1B and tier 2. It talks about an HRA contribution, and there were a few people that that confused that with our current insurance HRA plan. And I think that Linda might have spoken to it, but I think it's important to note that when we refer to an HRA contribution in these documents, it's referring to a retirement HRA account. And that would be where folks in tier 1B and in tier 2. Another common question is what are some of the advantages and disadvantages between a 403B and an HRA? And I'm not going to dive too deeply into that, but in general, an HRA can only be used for eligible health costs. So it is, it is a pot of money that the employee would have to deal with to pay for future medical costs. That money wouldn't need to be used if you earn that over four years after retirement, but you wouldn't be spending it all during those four years. And the remains in that pot could be used throughout the rest of your life. Whereas a 403B has more flexibility. It's not required that it's on health costs, health expenses. I'm not going to give any tax advice and get into that, but if people are in tier two based on qualifications, as for sure, they would be eligible to choose over the 90-day period, choose to take part in in tier three. So that might be something that the folks consider. And I'll talk to their tax advisor on that question. Another question that came up a couple of times was, I've been working for the district for X number of years. And the benefit that's in place right now is promising, or is guaranteed. One of the things that we looked at with the board and in the policy, it talks about the board's ability to, or not even ability, a requirement that HR committee, the board benefits every year. The options are really to benefit the same or to eliminate the benefit or make type of modification to the benefit. As the HR committee, we're expecting this issue, one of the things that came up were some. So really, the strong reason is not to keep the same. Not to, not to, I mean, what's currently in place this year, for the end of this year. But there are also a strong concern not to totally eliminate the benefit of the support, the process of looking for, what's a way we can modify it as a district and have a system in place so that people who are out or near that requirement have the least impact as far as a change from what's been in place compared to what you. Couple other things that we heard. What if I'm retiring this year? We have some people that have turned their retirement notice at the end of this year. And they have, everyone has until April 50th to turn that in to the others for retirement benefits. Folks that are retiring this year, retiring under the current plan that's in place. So this new plan would give that people retire between now and 2020 and June 30th of 2023. And the last thing that I wanted to highlight is is just the dollar difference between what the district is getting now as far as current numbers, and what, what these tiers would be. Linda went through in the documents, it talks about for tiers 1A, 1B, and tier two, different amounts depending on single versus family insurance. In 1A, it's listed as a maximum total over four years. In 1B and 2, it's listed as a annual dollar amount. But just to highlight what those premium costs are right now, or that contribution from the district to employees. Single, if people are on single insurance right now from school district this year, the district's contribution is $5,739 if they're on the HRA, and $7,491 if they're on the HRA. And for family, it's $13,000 floating in the state. They're on, they're on the HSA. And for family on the HRA, it's $17,509. So those are different than the totals that are listed in 1A, 1B, and 2. And the other change, and in some cases, the numbers now are less than, than what we're going to be in those other tiers. Another significant change, those paying away from providing that technical benefit and having it be a health insurance benefit, if that makes sense. Oh, is what I just shared.
For next year?
It's next year. Okay, thank you. So the number that I just shared was current.
Thanks for all that info, Rich. The board has had many times over the past couple of months looking at this benefit. I believe that we've been able to use that many hours, we've been discussing the various options available. I believe that what we've come up with, these goals and board headed outset, such as giving staff credit for years of service, not making any changes to those who are closest to retirement, encouraging longevity and being financially sustainable for the long run. I would like to thank Linda, Sarah, and their team for their help with this project and knowledge and expertise that is very valuable. Rich, I did have one other question, just regarding that. People might want to jump from two to three. How was it possible about that going to be there on this staff?
We would be initially providing written instructions where everybody has the certain backgrounds to work from, but then going over the resources to people that groups in schools or individuals that have that kind of best questions. One other thing I want to highlight is, one of our goal is to get out compensation packages for those that are competitive here. In other employee groups across other school districts, typically use the value of conference card comparables. This is what Dad and Grandpa helped us with too. And then, as we talked to the leadership there, that there are different groups across the state that are offering health insurance to retirees. And a lot of districts are transitioning plans similar to this. Or either how transition broad, transition. Don't make a motion to approve other post-employment benefits planned for the years. The support staff has presented that the board is ensuring it's support staff post-employment plan designed in February 1, 2023. Okay, thank you. Motion corrected seconded by Jennifer. And what, both of the doubt, the changes that we're using, et cetera. Any other input? Folks, we all spent a lot of time on this, so I would want to make any thoughts.
Due to the fact that teachers just got this information and five something in Thursday, and then they had the holiday, and then they were all busy doing their jobs today, none of them had time to really delve into this, especially just briefly, now that we said. And I would like to see this most of them, so those who need to approve. And I would like to see this most of the time, so those who need to approve or whatever. But that would, you know, take their time to actually schedule meetings, to talk to staff, not assume that the staffs could call you for the extra set of meetings. They have particular examples, some may be for four and half person meetings. One thing Rich brought up, a promise they do, there's nothing promised anywhere on Dr. 10 because they cannot negotiate. This is something that they're trying to do. A question for Chris, are you going to open a movement to make changes to? How will, I don't think those questions, how are we going to deal with your backup insurance, will there be a period for that?
Do you have a question on this?
Will there be an open enrollment period if you want to get back on insurance? Or if they, looking at your HRA and HSA for health benefits, they want to change that as sort of open enrollment period?
Yes, every day, we have open enrollment period for insurances. And that's the start this year, and we'll make first and hope to possibly reach well for that. That's every day we have that open.
And that needs to be clarified so people want to get on that for the last three years or whatever.
And we'll be rolling that information out here in the next couple weeks.
But I think by hearing you leading to just giving us, look at the staff, feel free to figure this out while they're still doing their jobs.
One thing, sort of later in the path, hopefully, to start a deadline for employees to qualify students who are retiring. This decision goes, take that forward. If we provide further quotes to consider retiring each person, it's going to actually.
Is there a later, is there a?
Sorry.
The same, who's end of meeting, is there?
I think I understand Shelley, but some groups, we can have events, but the water purposes will be great. And also want to remind everyone that all the professionals in the world, you know that.
I love that.
Anyone else have thoughts?
I've got a lot of thoughts. I think a big part of this for me in this process of the education base is a very complex process that we need to fight for and work for. As we move forward, we need to propose changes. I think the staff, I think it's the education that's there. Like Chris, I would expect we're going to need to educate staff. These are some big, big choices and changes in the area. I do like the changes, especially Tier 3, that's our whole option for staff. Kelly, I can share a bit about holding off. I've tested, I think, staff, our board is going to review the job we're at, how we got here.
I like leave and test. I, you know, well, I don't know, leave and test.
Moving forward, that's, Chris, I, I trust in staff.
I know. Okay. Yeah, I would echo pretty much what John said. This has been a big lift, really, really big lift. I don't know, the previous boards have got, we've got, we've got your best two months or whatever. So I would also echo Rick's comments. Hats off to Sarah and the folks at the benefits and to Chris and Harry and Rich and so forth. This is complex stuff. You know, when you talk about multiple, it's an awful effect on folks depending on years of service and eligibility to retire, et cetera, et cetera. I feel like we struck a really good balance between being able to modify or change the benefit so that we are sustainable financially, et cetera, and yet not shift it so quickly that it affects folks in our state. Of course, the end of the tiers, et cetera. So that was a real goal of the board, is to have both of those points balanced. In addition, the new option, if you will, of a 403B for younger or newer employees, somewhat more modern, have looked towards benefits at retirement. So I'm in support of this move based on the level of work and diligence that the board put in.
I would just agree with you, and well, I feel very comfortable going ahead. To best professional staff, we can get 14. Because without, she's given some comparatives within our region, and I feel like a plan is a extremely competitive field. And I also know quite a bit over several years of class, their classes to the district. So I can just, just like, struggle that there. And I don't like being objective in what is very well taken into consideration of those who are close to retirement. From the tier 3 standpoint, it is very attractive if it passed. And it's going to pass your own balance as well. As being able to be to put along a long-term dedication, can be related to go back.
I have a motion to second down the board, like Rick and Paul mentioned, but I do not want to. I would say what the pictures. And I see no more inkling that way, so we will proceed to vote. I will reiterate the motion. I believe it was brought forth by Rick, seconded by Jennifer. Motion is to approve the other post-employment benefits plan for teachers and support staff as presented in the proposed teacher and support staff post-employment plan design effective July 1st, 2023. We'll call vote, Joseph, and I, who's right on my right, with Mason, who's going to put on this. We'll start with John. Yes. And Mike. Yes. And Rick. Yes. Joe is a yes. Jennifer. And Shelley.
I'm going to say yes, but I would like to see it.
So I see six to zero. Call that motion passed. And once again, thank you to everyone that contributed. This was a big lift. Okay, Rick, you may move on.
Okay. Next up, one thing that I know was the 2023-24 budget planning and timeline. We get here and it tied together. We had a high-level discussion about the next steps regarding 23-24 budget, this is valid, like, these are plans with state holders, you know, disagreeing. Identify possible budget reductions, bring around budget for extension. See it with very staff people. Yeah, any, that was next reduction, which is planning staff. So Thomas shared that we will be identifying initial reductions in staff for the 23-24 budget here.
Chris, I just want things kind of both always have together, but it's developing budget next year and staff. Very much related to the referendum passing, that short walk. In order to have a balanced budget, it's on our expenses, it's early. So where people look up on the cost.
Okay, moving on to D was 2023-24 contracts, letters of employment, letters, and timelines. This is attached in Board Docs, and since the December 12th, 2022 Board meeting, HR has updated the timeline reaching the 2023-24 contracts and letters for staff. The dates listed in Board Docs are tentative, and some dates are dependent on how the negotiation process works out. Any questions at all about that? Joe, that's all I have.
Very good.
I have some additional.
Both of you have.
Will there be an idea of staff reductions before you start negotiations?
At that time, we won't be starting negotiations, potentially. Okay, thank you, Rick and Mike. We will move along. Thank you, Chris. Four is miscellaneous. A there is our action on staffing report. We have two versions, we have an original and an updated one in Board Docs.
I'll make a motion to approve the staffing report presented.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Jennifer, to approve our staffing report as updated. Any questions? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That clearly passes. B is gifts and donations, the list of which is in Board Docs. I'll move to approve the gifts and donations with Greg, seconded. Thank you. Motion from John, seconded by Rick, to approve our gifts and donations from our generous benefactors in the district. Questions on those? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? I call that clearly passed. And meeting dates. Mr. Goman?
We have a couple upcoming meetings, and then one that we need to schedule. The next regular scheduled school board meeting is on Monday, April 10th at 6:30 PM here in the district office in the E C.
I think it's Monday, April 24th.
Yeah, that makes sense. So Monday, April 24th, two weeks from today. Tomorrow is the Board of Cambusers meeting, that's at 9:00 AM in the first floor conference room at district office. We have an HR committee meeting scheduled for 8:45 AM on April 19th. We also have an HR committee meeting scheduled for 6:30 PM on April 25th. And we need to schedule a finance committee meeting prior to the April 24th board meeting. We're looking at as a possibility Wednesday, April 19th at noon, which that works for finance committee. Folks, I know Dave isn't here, but you can reach out to Dave.
Yeah, I will. I think I've run that up the slide hole and you thought it was okay. But let's tentatively say yes.
Mike, does that work on yours?
It does. Eddie, send it over.
No, for the finance committee on Wednesday, April 19th. Probably will send it by Saturday.
And just to clarify, Joe, you're going to chat with Dave?
Yes. Yep, I will double check that. And that's all you have, Rich? Alrighty. So that's the rest of, or the end of the regular agenda. We are on the verge of possibly going to an open executive session, which I will read in a moment. And just to clarify, we do not anticipate coming back to open or action on any of those items. So legalese notwithstanding, pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 Sub 1 Sub C and statute 118.22, and it is to discuss and take action if appropriate concerning employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Subject matter is professional staff employment and performance resignation and preliminary notice of contract for non-renewal and/or reduction in force pursuant to Wisconsin statute 118.22 Sub 5. I would entertain a motion to do such.
So, second.
Thank you. Motion from Mike, seconded by Rick.
Excuse me, Joe, before we go, I just want to take a quick second to thank Shelley and Mike for their service on the board.
We'll continue that next one, or next meeting.
No.
Well, your.
The certificates that are.
Well, yes, okay, it's a technicality, but the other board members aren't seated, so we take the action at that meeting. But.
Are you planning to attend that one?
You're not, you can.
I was not, but.
Okay, okay.
Thanks, Rachel.
Well, you can tell, do the same, I'll do the same thing, but. First, prior to our executive session, you may continue your thought, and I will echo it at some point.
I just wanted to thank Shelley, Mike, for their service on the board and service in the classroom. Everything they do is part of your duties, and thank you very much.
Sure. And I, as board president, would echo that emphatically. We have had a high-functioning board. That's a goal of school districts. And when we go to our annual conventions, those are things that are talked about in places that folks strive to do. And I can tell you that for the last several years here, we have had a high-functioning board, and it's due to the hard work that these people put in. And Shelley and Mike are perfect examples of all of that. So we thank them for their service. And I have, from our folks at WASBE, which is the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, certificates of commendation. I'm going to share one with each of them. This is to Michael Hoffman, in recognition for your service to the children in Wisconsin Public Schools. Signed by Roseanne Kown, our president, and John Ashby, our executive director. And here again, thank you, Mr. Hoffman. And likewise to Shelley, it's the same certificate of commendation, presented to Shelley called Hanky, in recognition for your service to the children in Wisconsin Public Schools. And with my heartfelt thanks and congrats. Okay, having done that, we have the motion on the floor to go to executive session. We'll call it, starting with Shelley.
Yes.
And Jennifer.
Yes.
And Joe is yes. And Rick.
Yes.
And Mike.
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
Six, open, are in executive session. Thank you, one and all, for coming.